Guys, I'm Gwesfumelo. Today's chapter is in the same way. Gwesfumelo is not only here in the Bible, but also in the Bible of the Lord. It says that when God is speaking to us, we must obey His commands. This is what God said to us in the study of the Bible, as a continuation from the study of the Bible last week. Greetings from the church of Moses, who has come to meet with Jesus Christ. He is the Lord of all. The Lord is speaking to us, God, speaking to us. The Lord is speaking to us. He is preparing for our study. He is preparing for our study. He is preparing for the study of Exodus. In the study of Exodus, we will read the chapter 3 of the study. Now we will read the study of Exodus 3. The study will be completed by reading the book. And it will be completed. The study will be completed by reading the study of the Bible. Exodus 3, last week. It says, "In the book of Exodus, we will read chapter 8." The study will begin by reading the study of Exodus. We will read the study of Exodus 3. We will read chapter 10. "The Lord is speaking to us." "He will speak to us." "We will hear him speak." "He will speak to us." The church of Moses says, "Who is the church of Jesus Christ who has come to meet with Jesus Christ?" "He is the Lord of all." "He will speak to us." "He will speak to us." God is speaking to us. He is preparing for our study. He is preparing for the situation of speech. "We will read the study." "We will read the study." This is the chapter 3 of Exodus, verse 9 and 10. And we will read the study. "When we hear him speak, we will hear him speak." "We will hear him speak." "He will speak to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "We will hear him speak." "He will speak to us." "He will speak to us." "He will speak to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." Amen. Thank you. "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "In the study of Exodus, we will read chapter 3 of the study." "He will speak to us." 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 Amen. This is the study of Exodus, chapter 3. "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "We will hear him speak." "He will speak to us." The study of the Bible. The study of the Bible. It is important to read the study of the Bible. The study of the Bible is important to read. "The Lord is speaking to us." "We will hear him speak." "He will speak to us." The church of Moses, from the study of Moses, says, "It is important to read the study." In the study of Exodus. The study of Exodus. Exodus 1:1-12, verse 36. Exodus 1:1-12, verse 37. Exodus 1:9. Exodus 1:1-40, verse 38. "It is important to read." 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 "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." Exodus 1:1-12, verse 36. Exodus 1:1-12, verse 36. If you read the study of Exodus. The study of Exodus. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 If you read the study of Exodus, verse 9. "The Lord is speaking to us." Read the verse 1-8. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 If you read the verse 9. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 "He will speak to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." I just want to say. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 Now, the response of God to Exodus. "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "He will speak to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "He will speak to us." If you read the study of Exodus. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 Now, in Exodus. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 If you read the study of Exodus. "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 "They are painful cry." Note, in the study. "They are painful cry." "Pray to the heart of God." "The heart that sobs make more sound than the heart that sings." "The Lord is speaking to us." "They are painful cry." "Pray to God's heart." "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 Now, when Pharaoh treated Israel as slaves generally, God was not moved by that. But when Pharaoh started to treat them as his objects, not as human beings, what responded? Tell us, now. "Uthiko can seem not to care, when even the people who preside over you and sedent in it treat you as if you are beneath them, yet you are not actually." "But the moment they start treating you like an object, then God will surely respond, because Uthiko needed to teach Pharaoh that he did owe Israel, even though he himself called them his people." "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "You will never know the button you press and kiss when God speaks by the way you treat his people, and Uthiko responds, and all the fire that has been battling in his heart, Uthiko will fall upon you, and the worry that you ought never to touch God." "The Lord is speaking to us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "The study of Exodus." "If you read the study of Exodus." "The Lord is speaking to us." 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 "We will hear him speak." "We will hear him speak." "We need to know that sometimes the divine plan of God needs to be true us." "The Lord is speaking to us." "Not because Uthiko needs us to succeed in plan yah, to fulfill, but because God chooses us to be instruments of fulfilling his divine plan, not that God is out of options. When God chooses us, in the study of Exodus, that is both a privilege and a responsibility. It means humility. It also needs commitment and conviction, so that it will be good to us." "The church of Moses." "The church of Moses." "It was an instruction to Moses." "The Lord is speaking to us." "It was an instruction, not a matter of debate." "The Lord is speaking to us." "He was being summoned to go to Pharaoh." "The Lord is speaking to us." "He was being summoned, Moses, to go back to Egypt, the place of his past, his untingified past, to face his demons." "The study of the Bible." "The study of the Bible." "Moses committed serious actions. He was speaking to us." "He was speaking to us." "The Lord is 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 speaking to us." Notice. "God was not shy about the criminal activities of his past, Moses." "The study of the Bible." "God was not ashamed of his past, Moses." "The study of the Bible." "God was not unaware of his past, Moses. God knew about Moses against his past, oh, my. My name is called. So, from the study of Exodus, the study of Exodus." "The 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 study of Exodus." "Sometimes God will have a woman who will speak to us. And when it is said that we are unprepared for, God will speak to us." "The church of Moses." "The church of Moses." "The church of Moses." "Then, it said to us, 'Uthiko was not about whether he accepted Moses or not,' oh, my. Then, from the study of Exodus, then, Moses is a well-speakable person, and this will take place." "The study of the Bible." "The study of the Bible." "Oh, my. It was not about whether Moses was ready for his speech. Or whether he was foolish. It was not about whether Moses was prepared for his speech. Or whether he was prepared. Then, Uthiko is a well-speakable person, Moses." "The study of the Bible." "When the hand of God falls upon us, choosing us to perform such activities, we tend to think in assumption that 'The study of Exodus' is a well-speakable speech, oh, my. She is a well-speakable, not knowing that by virtue of Uthiko it is a well-speakable." "A well-speakable." "The study of the Bible." "The study of the Bible." "The urgency." "The study of the Bible." "The urgency of salvation and redemption of God." "The study of the Bible." "The study of the Bible." "We cannot possibly tell God where to or not to send us. Otherwise, we would need to stop calling him God." "Uthiko," "The study of the Bible, "cannot be limited to where to send his agents. Otherwise, Uthiko would fall short of his order." "The study of the Bible." "The study of the Bible." "What qualifies him? In the study of Uthiko, in the study of Uthiko can send us even to places that make us uncomfortable, to places that we send everywhere to. So, send here, oh. Uthiko sends us to those places successfully. That is what makes him God." "The church of Moses." "The church of Moses." "The church of Moses." "The study of the Bible." 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 "We will hear him speak." "The study of the Bible." 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 "When you read Exodus, you will find that Moses, he was not crazy when he said to God, 'The study of the Bible.' Being one unarmed man, 'The study of the Bible.' The beast, Moses, was full of blood and was fed. He was a man, Pharaoh, who had escaped from the city of Vile, Moses. Pharaoh had been saved by the blood of Moses. He was fed, Pharaoh, by the blood of Moses. He was fed, Moses, by Pharaoh, who had been saved by Moses. He was a man, Pharaoh, Moses." "The study of the Bible." "So, he was not crazy, it is Moses speaking to us. 'The study of the Bible.' 'The study of the Bible.' 'The study of the Bible.' Notice. Notice. "The study of the Bible." "The study of the Bible." "Oh, my. You are a man, and you have a lot of drugs. You are a customer, sorry. You are a man, and you have a lot of drugs. Oh, my, I am very busy with drugs." "The study of the Bible." 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 Masalonevam, godwa genbo ku, umosisi, wa ye maska buke ufaro, his capabilities oba. Ufaro, wa ye koshake, nansigini do, nansigini do, di mu shuma eva ke. Nansigini do. Nansigini do. Do not ask God, who am I? When God sends you out on a mission, masalonevam, you rather ask yourself, who is this God who sends me to such a dangerous place? Or such a hostile situation? Who is this God? Kune tjo ba, ubusu city, timu balina. Usa utika ubusa, uku balino tiko, onti thuma, we nse onintavo. Kune tjo ubusu city, timu balina. Masalonevam, goba utiko etu, usasi, ne naniwe nwele zetu. Robungo sbedha wa, as tumaguso, usasi in and out. Uta tu yeso, di ni tumazekasevo, palet kuenduka, goba utiko scares the environment. Before utiko, a tumated, you're transforming this, the empire. Before God sends an agent to transform wealth, God scares the environment. Kuka, masalonevam, awasinta ya, after God has scared the environment, a tumated. Masalonevam, angalamili, wetu mutuane, esaske tinepati umosisi, uyeso. Yonret scares the environment, wa ti, itesmina, ti ayasi, imisereziato. Robula de kagwako, goba utiko scares the environment before he sends an agent. Sa uva, sa uva, wa tu umosisi. Akuti, eh, timu balina, into wana, tima tenye ufaro, wati utiko. Wa ti, umosisi, ama umosisi, da wanawi, timpa kera pakelinda, oba umosisi, utiko. Benya zanga pasamo, ko keta umosisi. Masalonevam, wa tne tu umosisi, ezeksho shokala, wa kawesa utiko. Wa ti, da wanawi umosisi. Masalonevam, sometimes God chooses certain people to put his enemy into effect. Goba utiko, wa ye ma si, ufaro ba, wa ye funa umosisi. Masalonevam, wa kutaro ufaro, emfuna umosisi. Utiko, wa ye ma si ufaro ba, kutaro emfuna umosisi. Masalonevam, wa ye ko, waroni, wa ye ko, unjago umosisi, waroni. Godwa utiko, sangamketu waroni, umbikeleke, wa ye ko uyizo, umbikeleke. Wa gomitia de, godwa utiko, sangamketi, wa keta umosisi. Goba utiko, sometimes it does not make a mistake to choose you. He chooses you to bring enemy closer to the point of his death end. Masalonevam, elisuro koduka, umosisi, wa ti umosisi. Masalonevam. Akuti utiko, di akwa na, di kanu no uteleto, no uteleto. No uteleto. Ka ufunya uvestwe. Ufumanisino ba, strategically, uti utiko umosisi. Read Exodus 3, vestwe. Ufumanisino ba, uti utiko umosisi. It doesn't really matter what you think or what you planning to do. What I'm asking you to do will come to pass. It will surely come to pass. Mosisi, wa tu tito, ka ufunu vestwe. Upa wimba, kama nyama swe, uti utiko, oba ufuni umosisi. Robunga dile ya, godwa leto, dimuthuma yona, weza when zeka, futi sa when swanguwe, umosisi. Di neka masalana, ingano igisi, nguti ko. Of what yao, God by person, utiko of what yao. Masalonevam, God who calls against the will of men. Goba wati, into sa uti ni, godwa, utiko, obuka roko, lotanwe koli sano. Atopose, against the will of men, eh zeka yango yake. Notice. This is where umosisi realized that, masalonevam, he does not really know God. Di ege, di ege masalone, di ege no mtrebi. Kula apa, kuvestwe, apo umosisi. Masalonevam, ate wako ya umosisi oba, eh, kuteka ti, and ma si utiko. Apa kuvestwe, masalonevam, awasinta ya, kwa koko oba, umosisi, aga ma si utiko. Masalonevam, realize that he does not know utiko. Masalonevam, di kanu uga nasen dito. The one who summoned umosisi to go after it. Masalonevam, umosisi needed at least to have something to tell to his audiences upon one who sent him. Masalonevam, wa tu umosisi, ulake, ka si tsa, apa kuvestwe ti. Wa tu umosisi, oba ke, ya konse talisha, de nu keta utiko. Send ye, wa yana bakasira eh ni, di si tu tigo we, uti thumi. Se wona manti boze, obukuba ni no tigo, obukumile yo, se ti ni kuba. Masalonevam, wa ye ma foke, utiko. Masalonevam, utiko, katiko, unkoxi, kakoxi, obunkani, lapunkani. Wa ti, timu ye, eh timu ye, yechi kobo, oti kuye, oti thumile booni. Masalonevam, ya fuka ke, kula nta wo, ingo nduka umosisi, na fuka kula nta. Ingongo nduka umosisi, asaniti, emsuma e ni no le seshi. Asaniti. Ubunsulu, obu ma si, utiko. Abulelanga, e kulasini, ikamalake. The death of knowing God, ubunsulu, obu ma si utiko. Abulelanga, e kasi ni kamalake. Masalonevam, godwa, ulele kuleto, itetwa kumaraku. Eh ti kufa, uku kufoku, wa tu kaku koku. Elisola, liponiile, know something deeper about utiko and will know God better. Masalonevam, umosisi, wa koto ba, aga ma si utiko. Eh eh, lama tafa, agomitia ni, notice. Wa tu tigo, timu ye, timu ye, oti timu ye, oti thumile booni. Nasi no zibine, nte ro nishia paso. Ba gogo, di neka masalana ba, oshu ye, nasi se to zibine. Nte ro ba, na uka le fivali, na uka le fivali, is a dula yon. Nasi no ka uti wa iteta umosisi. Rango ba dimuthuma ufaro. Indo webe wa kupama sila eh, ino ka da, umosisi, amasireye yon. Azakumame, yatapa, inklizioka umosisi, ah uti utiko. Wa ti utiko, excuse me. Mosisi, amasireye, laa tu kutuma ba oba, uha ngule, eh iputa. Azakukumame, masalonevam, yatapa, inklizioka umosisi. Nasi godwa, into esmini, etetwa utiko, against leoka. Masalonevam, wa tu tigo, ufaro, agasu fuma, uku ba dula. Awasiba, di tete mete, masalonevam, di kana utike, utiko. God, oh omniscient, utiko, ono quasi goke. Wa ye te mi, asamthume, umosisi, esasoba, ufaro, agasu mandula. Because utiko had a deeper plan, like to save, onyana bakasira eh. Masalonevam, unfortunately, utiko, he barely communicates the world plan that he has. Kabantu ba ke, masalonevam, di neka, esu utiko, ucommunicata, itawa na, yete bolake. That he intends to communicate the rest of his plan, utiko. He barely communicates to us. Yet, utiko continues to send us to his machine. Masalonevam, and leto utiko, uyenza, because, just because a tumatina, it does not change from being his plan and become our plan. It remains his divine plan. If the utiko sends us to his machine, so he does not really have to communicate everything to us. We tina, we need, neliswa, to be humble in what we know about the plan of God. Masalonevam, se to we len, intantu kati ko, kune tja si aslo. Nansigini do, senza tana sa goku kui. Nansigini do, and zewa, di she yaba uni. Today, redemption is as urgent as it was in the past. Goba ni, o kala yoma siyo, obu yakala. No uti kuwe, ule seshi nana. Obakukonu. Oma siyo ba, uyakala. Obakukani so, oba. Obakukonu, tatu nova, uyakala. Kanu uti kuwe. Redemption, a rescue machine, is as urgent as it was. Ke kese city utiko umosisi. Apa ngoku, suapa psasa, suapa ngonso, suapa weyteki sayo, suapa ronyak sayo. Apa ngoku, because redemption is urgent. Masalonevam, redemption is urgent. Oba ufa, iska, eh sinzulisopso ko, fne kuyasoba, ama polisa, akimubiswango. Redemption is urgent, kena, yo ukala. Utiko, masalonevam, kena eto ba, obukala ba, ofigi, kum, apa ngoku. Redemption is urgent, usentisom, obile, obisiti. Masalonevam, ngaitile yu yafuna, ngaitile ya. Ngaitile emeko, yala mtumasiyo, ebekukale no ba, usinini. Kase she, pam, oba, di kanu, usiniso, ngamiile, iso. Zibine zidho, entantu usteta, zibine zidho, entantu usteta. Di tangu, uti, uko, usisuti, utiko. Masalonevam, umosisi, korona, impata ta sako, esnyarun sako, nde ta umiku yo. Ilusha onwale, God calls us to our service. Masalonevam, umfuna.